Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Call to order. We have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrich?
Here.
Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Thank you, Gail. Welcome to the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Ojai City Council. James, will you do the pledge for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll pull a picture of the flag up. And so we can all look at that. Please stand and right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. And may we have approval of the agenda? One favor. I guess we need a motion to approve since we are online.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, great. I will second that. Will you maybe have the roll call, please, Gail?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Stix, let's not forget the, in part of the approved agenda was a moment of silence.
We actually are not going to do that.
Okay, but weren't we going to have a discussion?
Yes.
Have an afternoon to talk about it?
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I'm getting to that right now. We don't have any presentations tonight. I do want to give everybody the opportunity to say anything about our beloved treasurer, city treasurer Alan Rains, who passed away right before Christmas and a real Ojai living treasure and beloved to so many in our community. And we were fortunate enough to be able to present him with the Historic Preservation Lifetime Achievement Award in the meeting in December, which was really a great honor. And just personally, I just was always so touched by Alan's warm, sincere smile and genuine, you know, huge heart and just his amazing desire to be of service. So. Anyone like to add anything? Bill?
Yeah, I really appreciate it. And, you know, the, Alan didn't like to have a fuss made over him. He just liked to contribute to the community, you know, and I think it's so fitting. We just have a chance to talk about him a little bit because I will always remember that we were able to give him that lifetime award, that he told a great story, you know, and contributed yet another piece of knowledge about Ojai history at that meeting. And just talking with him over the years, Alan was always just, he was just always so, I think, just always just in the frame of mind of contributing to the community. The work that he did for years as city treasurer was very, I mean, he, right up until, you know, unfortunately, his passing, he was contributing to the oversight of the city's finances. Obviously, all that he did with the institution of Rains. It's just hard to say enough about how much we're going to miss this gentleman. And I just, I know I will very much.
Thank you, Bill. Randy?
Mayor, I'll keep mine simple. You know, I believe that in life, there's givers and there's takers. And, and Mr. Rains was definitely one of the givers in this community and in life. You know, he led by example. He cherished this community. He gave back a tremendous amount of time and energy and love to this community. And it was always interesting when you got to see him walking down the street and you had a second to say hi and just, just, you know, he didn't, he didn't present himself as being something greater than what he was, which was just a kind man living in a beautiful community that he felt complete joy in. Just, he's just a great guy. So that's what I would say. God bless him for leading the life that he did and being the example that he is for all of us.
Thank you, Randy. Susan?
Well, I'm going to echo what everyone said and express my condolences to the wonderful Rain family. I know several of the family members. And I remember meeting Alan Rains when I was very young and I was extremely shy up until very recently, up until I had to run for city council, actually. And every time I would come into Rains, he would always come and, you know, and it was like he was welcoming me into the store. And in retrospect, I realized how very special that was. And he really was a wonderful, wonderful man. So he will be very missed. And I love Rains. It's one of the stories I continue to support much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Ryan?
Yeah, I obviously echo what everyone else has said. Alan was always such a wonderful man to talk to. And but I think I'll share a story. I was with the holidays. I was visiting my mom and I let her know that Alan had died and she was so sad. And she told me a story that was just really great. When I was very young, when my family first moved here to town and my mom went to Rains and she was looking around and Alan came up and started talking to her. And fast forward to an hour and a half later, going to the back room and learning everything about Ojai and having this great relationship. I had no idea about any of this till I brought it up over Christmas, too. My mom, you know, she was a little teary eyed, but it was just amazing how, you know, how that was a good thirty-five years ago and she still remembered it. And she just couldn't get over how, just how nice. And it was a big reason why they moved and ended up, you know, coming to town and feeling comfortable. And it had a lot to do with Alan and she was just walking through Rains and, you know, and ended up becoming friends for a long, long time. So I think it just goes to the character of the gentleman who were all kind of bummed that we lost. I'm glad we got in under the wire to get that award done. That was pretty cool. But, man, you know, to the whole Rains family, you know, we're so sorry for your loss. And, you know, Ojai is not going to be the same without him.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mayor, could I, yeah, add to? I wanted to reiterate one of the comments because I don't think people realize it. We have our budget committee meetings every couple of months. And we had just had a meeting in November and Alan participated and insisted on being here in person so he could review, you know, all the materials. And one of the, kind of the funny things that I took away from that meeting was we were talking about how interest rates were so low and that we were going to have to settle for some investments with lower interest rates. And Alan was not happy about that. And let me hear about that. So, you know, for anybody wondering, he was on it, you know, even at those budget committee meetings in November. So I was fortunate enough that we had a couple of discussions back when COVID, you know, first came around and it was something we had never seen. And Alan, you know, was there to tell us, he's seen, you know, he had seen everything in Ojai and, you know, that, you know, we would bear down and get through it. So he was a steadying hand for us on that and I really appreciated it. And so he definitely will be missed.
Thank you, James. And thank you all for your kind and thoughtful questions or comments and condolences once again to the family. Clearly, Ojai has lost a treasure, so. Moving on to commission reports. No commission reports, correct, James?
No commission reports.
Okay, we'll move on to public communication and beginning of the year is always a nice time to, for reminders. So a reminder that this is time for public to comment on items not on the agenda. So council will not be commenting. We're not ignoring you. We will, we are listening intently, though. And a reminder that it's a three-minute limit and please, out of respect and fairness to everyone, if you could stop talking in three minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated. Any public communication, Gail?
I will, for anyone who is here on the Zoom call from the public, if you are here to speak in public communications, not on any of the other agenda items, if you would use the hand raise function in Zoom and I'll go ahead and call on you. So we have Ron from the Ojai Library and I'm gonna, Ron, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. If you can, you can go ahead and speak now. It's Ron Solorsino from the library.
Thank you so much, Gail. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, members of city council. My name is Ron Solorsino and I'm the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I just wanted to provide you tonight with a quick update on the Ojai Library's operations. So on Wednesday, last Wednesday, January fifth, all Ventura County library buildings closed to the public for a planned period of three weeks as a precautionary measure to slow the spread of COVID- nineteen. Now, during this time, all library branches, including the Ojai Library, will continue to offer walk-up service to customers who are picking up holds. Walk-up hours are going to be available during our normal hours of operation, which are Monday through Thursday from ten AM to eight PM and Friday through Sunday, twelve PM to five PM. Library materials, including our computer kits with hotspot internet access and our home energy kits, are all available to place on hold and to borrow. Also, online library services continue to be available twenty-four seven through the library's website. These include eBooks, research databases, virtual storytimes, live homework assistance, and more. The library is also continuing to offer its in-person outdoor storytimes during this closure. Locally, those include the program at the Ojai Community Farmers Market, which we do at three thirty PM on the second Thursday of the month, and also the weekly program at Miners Oaks Elementary School, which happens every Friday at ten thirty AM. Both of these are storytimes that are still available. We do ask that folks wear a mask and social distance, but those are still happening. So for a full list of Ventura County library branches and hours of operation or to visit our e-library, please visit our website and that's www.vencolibrary.org. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me or the staff at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And if there's anyone else in the, in the Zoom waiting room who wants to speak in public communications, if you would please use the hand raise function, I'll go ahead and call on you. And nobody else is raising their hand.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gail. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, could I quickly just note, there was a comment and I think the participant or the person is in the meeting, there was a comment about the item one G, the written policy for Records Acts Act requests. I haven't had a chance to really dig into the comment, but it's not time sensitive. We were trying to adopt just a policy to provide clarity. So I would suggest that the city council pull that item. It'll give us some time as staff to review the concerns that the person raised and bring that item at a future meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I would recommend pulling item one G from the consent calendar for today.
All right, thank you. Susan?
I'll move to pull item G.
Okay. I'll second that. Sorry, go ahead, Bill.
May I suggest, Susan, your motion be to approve the consent calendar except for item G?
Oh, of course. I knew that didn't sound right. Okay, my motion is to approve the consent calendar except for item G. Thank you, Bill.
And I'll second that.
Great, thank you. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Protem Wyrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, it's six fifteen. So we have the public hearing at six thirty. So let's move on to number three nomination, agenda of number three nomination election of mayor pro tem. James, are a staff report for this?
Just a very brief staff report. Every year in January, we nominate and the city council nominates and elects a council member to serve as mayor pro tem for the next year. We typically do that early in the year and the person who is elected, this is more information for the public, but the person who's elected is essentially able to perform the mayor's duties in the absence of the mayor and do things like preside at the city council meeting if the mayor is unavailable or represent the city at ceremonial and civic events. So today, the staff report notes that we've had a pretty standard process of asking, or beginning by asking, having the mayor ask for a nomination. And then we have the simple process to have the council vote on that nomination. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor to to open it for nomination and election.
Are there any questions for council first?
I have a question.
Okay, I saw Bill's hand first. Question, Bill?
Bill, question. I was gonna make a nomination.
Okay, Susan?
My question is, if we were doing this on a rotating basis, does anyone know whose turn it is?
Yes, so in twenty, I'll read, over the last five years to now. So in two thousand and seventeen, councilmember Wyrich served as mayor pro tem. Two thousand and eighteen, councilmember Haney. Two thousand and nineteen, councilmember Francina. Two thousand and twenty, councilmember Blatts. And two thousand and twenty-one, councilmember Wyrich. So if we just continued in that order, it would be councilmember Haney.
Okay, any public comment on this before your motion, Bill? Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom waiting room who, from the public, who would like to speak on this item, if you would use the raised hand function, I'll go ahead and call on you. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. All right. Bill, thank you.
I'd like to nominate councilperson Henry, Haney for mayor pro tem.
I'll second.
Okay, wonderful. All right, may we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
I think I will.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrich?
Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you, Bill, for all your help in the last year. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with you, Randy. Thank you.
You got it, neighbor.
Thank you. Yeah, easy. Just meet me on the corner. All right, it's six eighteen. Could we move on to number four? And then at six thirty, we can stop and go back. Is that all right with everybody? Okay, okay. Item number four, selection of council representatives to local county and national boards. So.
Regional boards.
Yes. Oh, regional boards. Oops. Thank you. Staff report. And just so, just in terms of process, if, how about once James gives a staff report and we get public comments and questions, if we could just, you know, if we're happy with what is, we just leave it as is and just raise whatever changes we want to make. Okay, James, any staff report?
Very, just very brief, very similar to the last staff report. Similarly, in January of each year, we, the city council will review the different local county and regional boards that we have appointees to and determine if any required change. We have four Ojai Valley-based boards, the OBGMA, the Ojai Unified School District, the Ojai Valley Sanitary District, and the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And then we have ten county and regional boards, which are listed on the staff report. And so in the attachment, we note who is the current representative. And yes, I would just recommend that if council wishes to make any changes to a board, that we discuss those. And what I would suggest is I will track that. And then at the end of kind of that discussion, we can have one motion to approve the total list. So I'll read back the list of who's on each board. So with that, the, I'll turn it back over to the mayor to lead that discussion.
Thank you, James. Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this item? Yeah.
If there's anyone in the Zoom waiting room who would like to speak on this item, if you would use the raised hand function, I'll go ahead and call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Thanks, Gail. Okay, would anybody like to make changes? And so what? Randy?
I would like to make a trade with Susan. I would choose that if you're willing to do so. I've always wanted to be on the Green Coalition and every year I've asked, I've never been on it. And I would like to trade you for the EDC.
Where's the EDC? I mean, where on the list is it? So I can think about it for a second.
It is on page, attachment A, page two oh four, in the middle of the page, just above the OBGMA and under the Animal Services Commission. So they have, EDC has a monthly meeting on the third Thursday at three thirty PM.
And those have been pretty much zoomed. And then while you're thinking about that, just for me, last year, I think I took on V-COG because Ryan had difficulties getting to their meeting, so I'd like to stay on that. And I'm on Gold Coast. I have no problem staying on that unless someone wants it. So that was the only change that I see for myself. I don't know if that's how we're doing this, but that's, I'm comfortable with everything else.
Okay, let me, here's my response. The Green Coalition has hardly been meeting, but I think it would be great if you connected, you know, with them and told them that you're the new representative so that when they go back into action, they'll contact you.
And can you forward me all their information?
Yes, yes, I'd be happy to do that because I'm still in touch with them. Not as regularly as I was, but pretty much in touch. And I'm looking at this monthly third Thursday. Could I, could, I'd be happy to do it, but I can't do it this month? Can I wait until February? Would that work?
Is there an alternate? Is there an alternate to the EDC?
There is an alternate listed as councilmember Wyrich.
Why don't I be her alternate?
Yeah, why don't I withdraw from that? Why don't I withdraw from EDC and the two of you set up as primary and alternate?
Right, so Susan will be primary and I'll be the alternate and I'll take your meeting this month, Susan.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
Okay. And where is this located? Where's the meeting? Is it virtual?
Yes.
Oh, I can do it this month if it's virtual.
Okay.
Yeah, so I might as well get started. I thought I had to drive and drive and I'm just too swamped to do that. Okay, all right, that's great. Okay, happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to step down on the alternate position. I think the two of you would be good on the EDC. It's a good way of knowing a lot of people in the county. I'd also like to suggest that I be deleted as alternate on the Clean Power Alliance. I think that Mayor Stix and Michelle Ellison do a fine job with that. And I don't think we need two alternates on that.
I'm sorry, what are you, you're saying that you would like to?
On the Clean Power Alliance, I don't think we need two alternates on that anymore. So I'd like to withdraw as alternate on that and just have you and Michelle Ellison be, you be the representative, Mayor Stix with Michelle Ellison as alternate.
Okay, I'll check in with Michelle. I'm sure she would be happy.
She's alternate now, so it's just.
Yeah, yeah, she wants to stay on. She'd let us know. Yeah. But can I ask a question, James? Do you then contact the EDC? Or do I, am I responsible for?
We would contact the EDC. In fact, I think I was emailing with Bruce Stensley today. So I'll follow up with him as soon as, you know, tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Wonderful.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to be on OBGMA and I'm going to read a brief explanation why. "I deeply appreciate my council colleague, Mr. Wyrich, who has substantial knowledge and has served on the OBGMA over the past year. We have, however, different beliefs on how best to increase our water reserves. I would like my colleagues on the council to consider a few facts when deciding who should represent the city of Ojai on the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. The established tradition was for the mayor to serve in this position. I was elected mayor with sixty-four percent of the vote. Last year, some of my council colleagues voted to have councilmember Wyrich serve in this position. While councilmember Wyrich has immersed himself in the details of what is happening with our local water supply and how best to win the water supply fight with our neighbors in Ventura, I have been researching what is happening with water supplies both locally and in the Western US. What I have learned is that climate change and the resulting aridification are impacting our ability to capture and store water in surface reservoirs. Though the, over the past weeks, we have been blessed with rain and above normal snowpack in the Sierras, scientists are telling us that the drought is long from over and that we will likely continue to experience extended drought and aridification in the Western US. Unlike extended drought, aridification is permanent. Over the past year, while serving as a representative on the OBGMA, councilmember Wyrich voted to allow two new water wells. I would not have done that. It is clear that the two of us fundamentally differ on how best to manage our water reserves. Considering the fact that the twentieth century was anomalistically wet and that our local and regional water supply and demand systems are predicated on this wet time in geological history, I'm deeply concerned about increasing water demand until our water reserves are at acceptable levels. I believe that whatever water we gain through conservation and increasing water capture in our watershed should be committed to increasing our water reserves in this valley rather than serving new urban or agricultural demands. It is clear that we have surpassed geophysical limits in the Western US. Our water supply and reserve system are failing. Over the past year, Lake Mead, which is along the Colorado River and the largest water reservoir in the country, reached its lowest level since the Hoover Dam was built in the nineteen thirties. In the Central Valley, farmers are fighting with one another over who gets what little water is left in aquifers. Our approach to water must radically change. The city of Ojai and many other interests rely primarily on the Ojai Basin for water. When it does not rain, water levels in the Ojai Basin go down quicker than Lake Casitas. We rely on water from Lake Casitas as a backup water supply when the Ojai Basin levels are low. Therefore, during extended drought, these two water reserve systems are inextricably linked. Considering that even after the recent rains, Lake Casitas water levels are at thirty-five percent, and that is in the best circumstances, it would take decades for it to fill back up. Ojai Valley water reserves are tenuous at best. For these reasons and in the interest of honoring the will of Ojai voters, I respectfully request that I serve as the city of Ojai representative for the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. I propose that councilmember Wyrich be my alternate so he can continue his great work at the local level as I would like to collaborate with him and rely upon his institutional memory and expertise during these difficult times. Thank you. So that's where I am there. Susan?
Well, it's six thirty. And I would really like to hear everything that Bill has to say and not try to squeeze it before.
No, yeah, it's six twenty-nine right now. So how about we, you know, we'll switch back to the public hearing and then we'll, and James is keeping this list, so thank you.
What are we doing right now at six thirty?
We have a public hearing at six thirty that's scheduled.
If I could jump in briefly, mayor and council, the issue is under the new laws governing redistricting, we have to set these redistricting hearings at a precise time as opposed to the usual, we'll get to it when we get to it in the order. So with that, my recommendation would be to pause this item, take up the redistricting item and then come back to this.
Thank you. I just needed to know that.
Okay, thank you. So we will come back to number four and we'll move on to the public hearing, which is number two. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, number, it's the third city council redistricting public hearing, introduction of draft maps and we will receive input from city council. So James, do you want to give a presentation on this?
Sure, thank you. And, yeah, we do apologize about the scheduling. It's a little strange where we have to set the precise time, but it is once every ten years. So it's not, it's not the worst thing in the world. But we, we have today, and we have made available on our website and a couple of other locations, the two kind of first draft maps. and a couple of other locations, the two kind of first draft maps. And so today, we'll be kind of walking through the process, how we got here, how those maps were drawn. And then it'll provide an opportunity for the City Council and any members of the public who want to comment on, to be able to provide feedback on those maps as well. So, and then allow the City Council to give some direction moving forward on modifications or things like that. So we have Kay here today from Redistricting Partners, who is our partner in redistricting in the process. And so I will turn it over. Kay has a PowerPoint that briefly explains the background and then dives a little more into how the maps are drawn. So Kay, I'll turn it over to you.
Awesome, thanks so much. I'll pull up the presentation now. All right, so my name's Kay Montleisure. I am a project manager with Redistricting Partners, and we are going to go over our draft maps for the City of Ojai today.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, but I forgot to mention, we do have translation available in Spanish. For anybody who's watching and needs Spanish translation, you just click the interpretation bottom, at the bottom button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And so I'll turn it back over to you, Kay.
Thank you, James. So first, we'll just go over the agenda quickly. So we're just going to go over some basics of redistricting, and then go over some potential new maps for the City of Ojai. And so this presentation is a draft map presentation, so we will not, these aren't final maps. We're going to be taking feedback tonight, and we'd love to hear from all of you, your feedback on these maps. So we're going to be going over Fair Maps Act criteria, our two draft map revisions, and go over next steps in the redistricting process. So first, we'll go over the California Fair Maps Act and our redistricting principles that we follow with all of our clients. So first of these traditional redistricting principles, they're ranked, and the first of these is that each district has to be of relatively equal size. And when we talk about size and population, we talk about people, not just citizens or voters. So when we look at census data, we're looking at a total population. We also need to make sure that our districts are contiguous. And so what that means is that districts do not hop or jump, or another way to look at it is they are drawn with one line. They also maintain communities of interest. And a community of interest is really subjective and open-ended. So the way that we describe it is that it's a group of people that would benefit from being maintained in a single district. They also follow city and census-designated place boundaries. And we make sure that districts are compact in both appearance and function. And so when we talk about compactness and appearance, I'm sure that when most of you think of redistricting, you think of gerrymandering and those long, snaky districts. We want to make sure that we don't have districts that look like that. We're keeping them as square or circular as possible, and we're not, you know, going past different populations to pick up populations elsewhere. And when we talk about compactness and function, sometimes, you know, communities can look like they're right next to each other, but maybe there is a freeway or a river that separates these communities, and they don't actually feel that connected. We want to make sure that we are considering that when looking at compactness as well. So with more cities and counties using community-based redistricting, we are moving redistricting out into the public with maps driven by testimony from the community. So we take input from the community, and it drives the process with different ways for the public to engage. We also have rules for the process that emphasize the importance of traditional criteria and minimizing divisions in neighborhoods. And we also release maps for feedback. So today, we'll be seeing plans to spark more public engagement. So we have two plans to review tonight. We have Plan A and Plan B. And each of these plans has an overview, a data table, and individual district pages, and HTML web-based maps, so you can really zoom in and look at where those boundaries are. And they've been provided to the district, and they are available on the redistricting website. So first, we're going to take a look at the current lines. So these are the lines as they stand right now. And then we also have the data table for our current districts. So in District 1, we have a deviation of positive 5%. District 2, negative 4.9%. And District 3, negative 8%. And District 4, positive 7.9%, excuse me. So the district as a whole, the City of Ojai, has a total deviation of 15.9%. And we need to make sure that our deviation is 10% or lower, so we will need to see some changes to make sure that we get under that 10% deviation. And we also have individual maps of each of the districts, and they're in your packet and can be brought up on the screen at the end of the presentation if you'd like. So first, we're going to go through Draft Map A. And our first map was created based on public submissions on District 1 online tool. So we have listed here the IDs of those two maps that we used to help us draw Draft Map A. And this is what Draft Map A looks like. So both of these District 1 submissions, they moved to the northern part of District 1 into District 2, and also extended District 1 southwest into District 4 along North Ventura Avenue. And District 4 also picks up some of District 1 and 2 in the center. And District 3 maintains the same lines, and the boundary along District 3 and District 4 stays the same. And here we can see the data. We have lowered those deviations to make each district more equal in population for a total deviation of 9.3%. And Draft Map B is a minimum changes map, and really, our focus here was just to balance population to get under that 10% deviation. So here we can see it looks pretty similar to our current lines. And it was minimum changes, so really, there was only one area where we changed, and that's the eastern area of District 4 going into District 3. The original boundary was along Gridley Road, and our proposed boundary is on East Ojai Ave. So here we can see again, the deviations are lower in this plan.
Can I ask a question? Can you go back?
Absolutely.
Can you go back? You said something about Gridley. What did you say about Gridley and Ojai? Instead of it ending, instead of District 4 ending at Gridley, where will it end now? What is the suggestion here?
Yes, absolutely. So the current lines have District 3 and 4 boundary at Gridley Road. This proposed draft map just has that changed in order to balance population. And that change just keeps it along East Ojai Avenue instead of going up Gridley Road.
Okay, so then, where on East Ojai Avenue? What street?
So the boundary along 4 and 3, it was already along East Ojai, and instead of going up Gridley Road, it's just extending along East Ojai Ave.
Until the city limit, you mean?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, and where is Gridley going now? What district?
So it'll be in District...
You'll be able to tell, right? But I can't really tell.
Yeah, so let me actually, so this is the Draft Map 3 on the screen is the proposed boundary here. And then go, actually, we can see it right here, that change in District 4 and 3. So it used to go up, Gridley Road goes north to south. So the original, or the current lines has it with that north to south on Gridley Road as the boundary. And so just this Draft Map B is proposing that we just extend and move that area into District 3.
That makes total sense. I always wondered about that little piece of Gridley in District 4. That makes sense. Thank you. I wanted to be clear on that, okay.
And so as you can see here, we lowered the deviations on this plan as well for a total deviation of 9.8%. And so we're just going to look at these draft maps again to kind of see the differences again. We extended that area, the District 1 going down and taking a bit of 4, and keeping 3 and 4, the boundary there, the same. And also, 2 taking some of 1. And then in Draft B, we have everything staying the same except for 3 taking that portion of 4 on the eastern side. And so for next steps, we have some options of what we can do with this. We can identify tonight, we can identify preferred plans, what you all would like to move forward with, and make edits on a plan that you would prefer. Again, this is a draft map, so all of this is a draft, so we can make any, we'll take any feedback that you give us to make edits. Also suggesting possible changes. We don't have to just pick one plan, we can make changes to both of those plans and, you know, see what we like at the next meeting. And also providing direction for the preparation of new draft maps to be put out for public input and further review. Finally, considering new draft maps at a public hearing scheduled for the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So these are our options tonight, and I am happy to take any feedback that you all have or any questions.
Thank you so much, Kay. Much appreciated. Questions, Bill?
Yes, I was wondering, I have a comment on, I think, a problem with both of these maps with respect to communities of interest. Would it be better for us to take public comment and then get to that comment that I have? You think, we can open the public hearing and then discuss amongst ourselves?
Let's take the questions and then public comments, and then can we get to your comment?
Okay.
Any other...
I have, it's kind of a comment-question, a combination of comment and question regarding, I think, a problem with communities of interest being neglected in one important way by both of these maps. But I'll get to that later after we have our public hearing.
Any other, just brief questions for Kay before we move on? I'm making sure I can see everybody. Nope, okay, great. All right, let's move on. Any public comments on this issue, Gail? Item?
If there's anyone in the Zoom waiting room who would like to speak on this comment, on this agenda item, if you would use the raised hand function and let me know that you want to speak, I will go ahead and call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bill, you have a comment?
Yes. We have actually years of multiple studies defining communities of interest, going back to first the Sergeant Town Planning exercise, even before that, in terms of the general plan. It even popped up in our, looking at our urban forestry plan that we're in the process of revising. And in each of those exercises, the area more or less defined by the village mixed-use zone, the sort of downtown mixed-use core, most people think of it as just starting on the other side of Kenyatta and going east, especially to Montgomery or to Drown, is defined as a very, very well-identified neighborhood with certain characteristics. And so we have a situation here with both of these plans, where, for example, the areas east of Gridley are in part of what's defined by the VMU on the east side. And we have the VMU community of interest is defined by these other studies over the years, being the only strong community of interest that's divided into, in both these plans, a little bit different in definition, but among three districts. If you look at these districts, all the other zoning-defined areas, the Arvelata area, the area east of Drown, the Country Club area, north of Grand, those are all relatively compact in terms of identified, in terms of these neighborhood communities of interest that have been defined for literally many years, except for the VMU. The VMU is the only one divided up and not maintained as a community of interest. And I just really feel that the, this defined neighborhood that's, you know, been done by multiple exercises in the past is the only area that is, really violates, I think, in pretty intensely the community of interest criteria. And I would like to see if it's possible to have the VMU defined, you know, as a commonality of interest in the redistricting process. And I don't, I think that's a real problem with the way both these maps have been drawn. And I'd like to see a Plan C that focuses on how we might be able to district, maintaining the integrity of that important community of interest, namely, the people living in the downtown core in the VMU and the businesses in that VMU.
Can I go ahead and pull up? I have it handy. I could pull up that zoning map quickly just to kind of illustrate to those who maybe aren't familiar. And so this pinkish color coding is the VMU area. And so in particular, Councilmember Wierich, I think you're referring to this area here.
Right, and if you see it, it goes from the other side of Kenyatta, between Libby and Kenyatta there, all the way, basically to, to at least Montgomery. But I would say that the people, say, living just north of the Chaparral School along Oak, that whole corridor of Oak, all the way really to Drown, I think they have a sense of more of a commonality of interest than they do with people living way down in the Country Club area or in the Arvelata or way east on Gridley. But we have the VMU basically divided into three parts, depending on either A or B here. And I think that's a real issue here of how we can, if there's a way we can maintain the democratic balance, but still not sacrifice this, I think, real important community of interest that's centered on the VMU.
So trying to keep this area together as one.
As much as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even if it goes a little north or a little east or something like that, it seems like we've got some degrees of freedom in both of these. And we also, at least ought to look at that. I mean, if you just, if you know people that live in that area, I think they all think of themselves as a neighborhood. And Plan A and Plan B both really divide up that neighborhood three ways.
Yeah, it is kind of that intersection right now in both of the maps, where, you know, three or four districts all get, kind of start from and get divided up.
Yeah, so it sort of pinwells out of the VMU. And I just think we ought to look at, if it's possible, to do an exercise to maintain that neighborhood a little better in terms of a commonality or community of interest.
Yeah, and we could do that assuming there's, you know, a consensus from the council to do that. Yeah, and we could, we could do that assuming there's a, you know, a a consensus from a council to to do that.
I I, oh.
Susan, then Randy?
Yeah, I I just to see a a third uh option, uh what Bill is proposing with the na- you know, real clear with the names of the streets and so that we can really uh understand it. I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking about the Village Mixed Use Zone, it's in my mind, and we've got Ojai Avenue dividing it. Yeah.
Kind of starts just on the other side of Kenyatta on the west.
Yeah, yeah.
A a little bit above Oak and then and then uh east over to the uh uh to Montgomery, and I actually, I think, arguably could go a little further, but I just think that's a, that's a very self-consciously defined neighborhood in a lot of ways, and I'd hate to, I'd like to see if we can maintain it a little bit more um as a co- as a community of interest.
Can I make another comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
The other striking thing is how large, a physically large District Four looks, but you're, it's the same population, correct? It's just so spread out. I know, because I walked it.
Yeah, it's very spread out, exactly.
Randy?
Well, you know, when I was listening to Bill talk, it makes sense, and then as I'm looking at the map, I was just um then I said to myself, well, are we gonna combine all the VMU and try and work them into one district? Because if we do it that way, we're hop, skipping, and jumping. Um so what I'm hearing, Councilman Wire would like to keep the VMU contiguous, contin-
Well, at least do an exercise and see what that would mean.
To the, to above uh the one fifty and still leave the VMU down in Susan's uh group um into into uh District Four.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's not.
It makes sense to me, as long as we're not hopping
I agree.
Roads and 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 all of that, it did make sense, but um.
That's good feedback, because that was the question I was gonna ask next.
Yeah, I would agree that.
The heart of VMU, but we do have some VMU down here, so.
But I think people, they they don't think of themselves as much as part of that neighborhood north of the one fifty, the people live down there, I don't think.
Well, I just don't see this, I I again, I my concern would be trying to, again, that's where the word gerrymander comes into play, is when you start looping these weird circles into things. Um whereas I see the 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 intent and the reasoning behind keeping VMU above um the one fifty and VMU below, um yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, that's, I would agree with that.
And of the two plans, I think B is much better, it's just much easier and simpler in terms of north, southeast, west, cleaner lines, and there aren't those, that little section on the end of Gridley that's cut, cut up strangely, so. Any other comments?
Nice job.
If we could just get a si- a Plan C out there to follow that.
Okay, so our plan would be bring back uh Plan C that tries to maintain that um VMU, Village Mixed Use Community of Interest north of uh Ojai Avenue.
Yeah.
All right, we don't need a motion on this?
No, no motion is required. Consensus is sufficient to give the demographer that direction, and then it will return, and I believe it's scheduled to return at the February eighth council meeting?
Yeah, so it's one month, uh essentially a month from now, I know it's off by a day or two. And the, uh just two other points regarding that timeline, we do have the ability to have a fifth public hearing on March eighth if we need it. And uh we actually, our deadline to adopt is April seventeenth, so uh we have February eighth and March eighth. So there's still, you know, we still have uh time to go through some options, so.
And one point to bear in mind, to add to the city members' comments, is if the council makes a change to a map, it has to be adopted at an at a subsequent meeting, because maps have to be published on the city's website for seven days before they can be adopted. So it's, it forces it to be an iterative process. So this discussion is great to get uh direction on a potential changed map, but just bear that in mind. Hence, we have, we've said this early enough that we have plenty of time
Yep.
between now and the deadline three months from now.
Uh Randy?
Mayor, my 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 last comment too is, I know it was difficult for me, I had a um I I uh pulled up the map and then I tried zooming in to see the district and the district lines, and it was real difficult. So I don't know if that's something that we're doing, or Kay, if that's something that you're doing, but we might want to try improving the graphics so that so that anyone in the public can pull up a district and be able to zoom into it and still see the entire district, but actually see the four you you know, the 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 four lines that uh dictate what that area is.
Yeah, and showing showing the street names, I think, is a something we need.
Yeah, it it that was hard for me, I looked, you know, when these guys stand out, I I looked at them and they were just, it was fuzzy math to me, I couldn't see them.
Yeah.
You have, um in your packet, you should have received uh URL links to look at the maps online. So what it looks like is kind of like a Google Maps, and you can zoom in and look at where all those boundaries are and see the street names. So you should have that in your packet, um and uh it it should be on the website.
Hey, are you, are you suggesting that we read our pa- our packet?
Thank you very much, Kay, much appreciated for all your help, and um we will see you soon.
Absolutely, I'll see you with some updated maps.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we will move back to item number four. Um are there any other, uh before we go back to the suggestions, are there any other changes that anybody would like to make? Nope, um would you, do you mind reading those? Oh, Bill?
Uh yeah, I think I need to
Okay.
say something to your statement, respond to your statement. Uh first of all, I think I should continue uh the way it is with myself as the designee and uh Mayor Sticks has the alternate. I think it's worked well, I think it's important, and I want to make a comment on a couple things. In particular, um I, yes, there is a difference of philosophy here. There were two wells that were approved unanimously by the OBJMA board after it was determined that they were hard rock wells and not associated with the production level of the aquifer, one of the key issues that's very important to understand. So the idea was just to be fair with people that were not impacting the supply. And I think that um the presentation that we heard from Mayor Sticks, in fact, reveals a kind of thinking that's relatively frankly dogmatic. And that kind of dogmatic thinking is not what we need representing the city on a very sensitive issue. A a broad sweep issues um where, you know, basically signaling that we're not gonna approve any anything anymore, no matter what, is is just simply not a responsible way of handling the importance of uh the OBJMA and the very sensitive position it's in um with respect to looking at uh a range of issues with respect to looking at how uh we um uh perhaps take advantage of augmenting our ability uh for infrastructure improvements and reengineering our hardscape for capture of water and and uh and re- and recharge enhancements. Uh these are things that I'm working on uh quite intensely. Uh I have been pulling together people in terms of a of a more uh unified response uh to the city of Ventura, we're getting traction in that respect, I think with my uh my leadership is is has impacted and advanced the vital interests of the city with respect to the position of uh of OBJMA, working with uh uh CMWD on our common interests. Um been very involved with the in-stream flow uh ideas, and in fact, we uh we recently came across and again, because of my uh involvement and familiarity uh with possibly, uh we're gonna uh a an application, a grant application uh for Caltrans to do, to implement one of those ideas. So I think that it's important that uh we recognize that it's a systems approach and not um a a single-issue approach, that we need to um advance and represent the vital interests of the of the city of Ojai and the entire valley. And I also want to think that in in response, ye- yes, Mayor, you were elected to be mayor, but there was not an election over who was going to be representing the city in any particular way on any particular commission. And I just think that at this particular juncture, it's very important, and I think much better serves the uh the vital interests of the city if I continue as the OBJMA representative.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh Randy?
So um, Mayor, you both make compelling cases, and um I think you both missed out on something that I believe is very, very important regarding OBGMA, uh OBGMA, and that's the fact that they're writing their sigma, and they've been writing it for over a year, and Bill has ac- actively participated in that. And
On time and just approved.
And to maintain the continuity of that, I think, is is as is as is as is important as everything else that you two both um talk about. Mayor, I agree um with you a hundred percent about um understanding um our aquifer and understanding our reservoir. Um it was five or six years ago that I went to my first Casitas Municipal Water District meeting and asked them if that was a lake or if that was a reservoir, because they sure as heck had never treated it as a reservoir. Um and so that's where the struggle has been, and that's where I kind of lean on Bill, is that him and I both went into this five, six years ago and went into it, you know, ju- just with everything we had. And I think I said this last year, um next to Ryan um and Bill, I would say that those two are are two most um knowledgeable people in this water war and these water rights and how we look at water in our community. Ryan, um because he represents um a lot of different cases, that's why I never really nominated Ryan to be um on OBGMA. If he wasn't, I'd put him actually ahead of Bill. Um especially because of what he went through with Golden State. But uh I just like the continuity, it has, it's not personal, I like the continuity of the sigma. I like the continuity of the fight that we're in with Ventura and um and that's where I, that's where I rest, you know, my thoughts are continuity and and um again, the biggest thing to me regarding the OBGMA is the sigma plan and the fact that it's been ongoing. Their their first attempt was a complete absolute failure, and they finally are online and they're actually getting something done. Um and I attribute a lot of that to Councilman Wire.
Uh I appreciate that, and thank you, Bill, and thank you, Randy, for those comments, and um I agree, Bill, it comes down to philosophy. We have a different philosophy here, uh and I think that we have to save everything, any water reserves we have at this point. And so as a repres- as the mayor, as a representative of the people, that's where I'm coming from. Concern, save, uh and it does come down to philosophy. Bill, yeah?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's it, again, it's a systems approach. I think, I think you refer, you expressed a one-dimensional approach, which is uh not as effective, because it's a matter of balancing beneficial uses. It's a matter of uh being fair to everyone, and it's worth pointing out that um you know, I was one of the people that opposed the alternative plan that was not a a proper uh groundwater sustainability plan, because it didn't go deeply into these issues of sustainability. The current GSP does, uh it has um in includes uh, you know, scientific uh citations about the effects of uh of climate change in the groundwater sustainability plan that uh shows that it's a uh, you know, the parameters under which we can, we should sustainably manage this uh this aquifer. And it's been submitted on time uh to DWR and uh the Department of Water Resources and and hopeful that we get a a good response uh supporting this this extensive amount of work. And on top of that, uh we also need to make sure that we have, we don't have people with um agendas, and I'm not talking about you on this one, Mayor, but people that bring agendas of wanting to uh favor one beneficial use after another without a scientific basis, and I I've been very focused on that, and I think um that's another reason that I should continue in the position.
Um may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Susan.
Mayor Sticks, were you satisfied with Bill's explanation, his justification for the two wells? Or do we need clarification on that? You seem to think that that something was amiss?
Well, not not amiss, I would not have voted for those wells. You know, I think we just have to draw the line at this point, and we are, as we know, the twenty-first century is not like the twentieth century. And geophysics says this over and over again, we need to prepare for a much drier period in our his history of the planet. So, you know, the twentieth century was anomaly, so we can't give it away anymore, we just have to draw the line, and I'm, and I, you know, I feel I want to draw the line.
Well, I think we're, we we share the concern you expressed. I'm just not understanding from Bill's explanation, it's, can you explain that again even more clearly than you already did?
There's two different types of wells, Susan.
Okay, you know, that's what I want to understand.
Right, there's wells that that are often the production layer where the storage is, and there's wells that wells that do not. And these two wells, in fact, OBJMA has been very careful, uh uh if if someone has a property and let's say they need to uh, they want a well for their property for uh for their the property's uh use, uh then uh one of the things is, it doesn't have any effect on either recharge or withdrawal from the production layer, and both of the these wells were examples that do not, do not affect the uh the recharge and do not affect uh and are not drawing from the production layer, and those are the con- those are the ways that OBGMA evaluates uh wells, and uh these are situations where they just, they call, they they describe them as hard rock wells that have no uh substantial effect, or not even substantial effect, no material effect on our sustainable management of the uh of the aquifer. So that's, that's the basis for why the unanimous vote uh
Yeah.
both of these cases by OBGMA.
I I follow now what you repeated, basically, I could follow it better the second time. So this is not something you decided on your own, it was a unanimous decision by the OBGMA. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Um I think we've discussed this enough. Uh how, in terms of the the motion, James, you want to repeat what was said?
Well, so I think I have clarity on ev- on everything, I guess. Um the only thing I'm I'm not sure, so I've heard, you know, two proposals on OBGMA. I don't know that um I that I heard a consensus. On the others, the other, the ones that changed Clean Power Alliance Board uh uh would remove, we've removed one alternate uh Councilmember Wire from that, and it would be, it would remain with Representative Mayor Sticks and alternate Michelle Ellison. On Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County, uh we have Representative uh Councilmember Francina and alternate uh Mayor Protem Haney. And um on Ojai Valley Green Coalition, uh removing Councilmember Francina and um uh putting uh appointing Councilmember, our Mayor Protem Haney as the liaison, and uh Mayor Sticks is the alternate to the Green Coalition. Uh so those, those three were the changes. Um I don't, I do not have a change to OBGMA yet pending uh the council decision, so.
So Mayor, I have, I have two questions, so I don't know if you can see my hand. Um did we, did we us uh keep the same uh reps to the sanitation district, the school board, and what was the other one?
Yes, so those have not been discussed, so it would remain the same. Um I think the one you're thinking of, well, uh Ventura Regional Sanitation District is
No, the local ones, the four local.
Okay, Ojai Valley Sanitary District is Councilmember Blatts, what is the liaison with the alternate uh Mayor Protem Haney. Green Coalition, I just mentioned, uh school district liaison, Mayor Sticks, and Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Councilmember Blatts.
Okay, thank you, I just want, and and then if I don't know if we need a motion for OBGMA, but my uh my motion, if that's what we're doing, would be, do we keep the status quo?
If I could suggest, given that that motion may be a divided vote, that we would take it in two pieces. One would be a motion on the items for which there's consensus, and then second, the OBGMA appointment, as I suspect that one may not be five oh.
Okay.
And that might make the record cleaner for everyone to understand.
That's right, so so you um you need me to make a motion to uh 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 a a point, uh council persons as per agreed upon?
Exactly, for all, for all boards and commissions minus OBGMA. Exactly. For all, for all boards and commissions minus OB GMA.
This is, this is Gail. Before you make a motion, I just want to make sure that you're all clear on the SCAG being new on this list. Right now, I've listed Mayor Sticks since she was the representative to the May meeting last year and we don't have an alternate. And if you want to keep that the same, then that's up to you. If you want to add an alternate, that's also up to you.
Mayor, how would you like that?
Oh, well, and I definitely want to stay on that. It's great.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you.
They just voted to appeal 32 to 12 SB9, so that's great.
So I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. You made a motion, Randy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. A roll call, please, Gail.
Is everything except OB GMA?
Yeah, the motion to approve everything as discussed except for OB GMA.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And before we, as we move into OB GMA, I'd just like to say one thing. We cannot control geophysics. We cannot control Mother Nature. We can't litigate our way around her. We can't negotiate our way around her. And so that's why I want to be on OB GMA because we just, that's the reality. So anyway, you have a motion, Randy?
Yeah, that we that we keep Councilman Wyrick as lead and you as the alternate for 2022.
I'll second that.
A roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick, I remember this time.
Yes.
Councilmember, what did I just say?
No, you got it wrong.
Did I get it wrong?
I would recommend starting that one again. I think the record needs to be clear here.
I've been called worse, Gail.
Yeah, I'm going to try it over again and I'm going to start by saying Mayor Protem Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
And Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we don't have to have another motion. That's it. All right, well, I want all of us to live within our water means, so let's do it. Okay, let's move on to number five, item number five, city treasurer vacancy. James, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. So with, as, as we discussed earlier with the, the passing of our current treasurer, Alan Rains, one of the, one of the main tasks of the city treasurer is to serve as an elected check and balance on the staff and to make sure that the city's financial policies are being followed and that that, you know, payments and things like that are processed appropriately. So one of the challenges for us is if, when that position becomes vacant, we are required by state law, by, by government code, California government code, to, to fill the position within 60 days to ensure that there's, you know, that there is that, that there is a check and balance there. Although the, the interim person is not typically elected. But so this means that we would have to fill the city treasurer vacancy by February 21st, which does not give us much time to really, you know, to seek out a lot of options. And so we had to bring the item to, tonight to try to get a process established so that we can proceed. There are options, so the city council has options to choose how it would like to proceed. It boils down to, there's really two kind of simple options. One is whether to appoint an interim person to the seat who would serve until November 8th, until the November 8th election. Or whether to call for the election or to place the matter on a, on a special election. And so because of a variety of reasons, the election costs, for example, which are not insignificant, and I think we had estimated approximately $20,000 is the expected cost for an election. We are recommending a, an appointment process and the city council, again, can make that choice, but also can identify if there's any specifics that, that it would like to proceed with. The process we elected is the very simple bullet point list in the agenda packet, which essentially is if council agrees to go through an election process today, January 11th, we would publish a notice of intent to fill vacancy in the newspaper on January 14th. We would post on our, you know, various media outlets a call for applications, asking anyone interested in applying for the position. And then on, between January 14th through 28th, two weeks, we would open the application period and accept any applications from interested parties. That would leave us with about two weeks to make the appointment. So what we propose is the week of February 4th scheduling interview candidates, which can either, or scheduling interviews of the candidates, which can be either held by the council in a special meeting or by two, the, our proposal would be to hold it by the two council members appointed to the Finance and Budget Committee would be for the initial round of screening. All of the applications would still be provided to the council and the council could still ask, would take that, the recommendation from the committee, but the council would still have the option to, to make the final choice from the pool. And so that would be scheduled for the February 8th council meeting, approximately one month from today, where we would have an item on the agenda to appoint somebody to the vacant seat at that meeting. And that is the last meeting we could appoint someone to unless we called a special meeting prior to February 21st. So, so it's a fairly tight timeframe, which limits our options somewhat. And so that is the process we recommend in that tight timeframe. So with that, we are recommending that appointment process and I will turn it back over to Mayor Sticks.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Randy?
So James, that's a real tight timeline. If council decided tonight to make an appointment, could we do that for an interim position until the November 8th election?
Could, could council just make the appointment tonight, like if everybody agreed on a candidate? Yes, I, I believe so. I'll let the city attorney confirm that.
I was just reconfirming how we structured the item on the agenda itself. Yes, if the council has consensus, I think you could make an appointment tonight. Alternatively, you could, of course, make a nomination and vote next time. But if there's consensus, you could make an appointment tonight that would hold it until the November 8th election.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I think what we would do is if council agreed tonight, we can put a simple item on the February, or the January 18th, or I'm sorry, 25th agenda to just formally approve it so that it's a noticed agenda item.
And that'd be on consent.
So, so Mayor, if we wanted to go that route, I'm, I'm willing to suggest two names for tonight and let any other councilperson suggest a name and then we bring it back in two weeks and we actually vote on someone and make the appointment next in two weeks.
Let's, let's finish with questions and then we'll take public comment and then you can, any other questions? Bill?
Along the lines of what Randy was thinking, could we publish a notice of intent to fill vacancy? And then just bring whatever names came, came up in that short time period to the next council meeting and then we just make a decision among those names to try to get this done quickly? Is that also an option?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. The the only challenge with that, but if we can work around, or you know, we can make it work, is that the agenda comes out a week before the meeting. And so if we, if the notice is in the paper Friday and we publish the agenda Tuesday, that's a very tight window. But we could actually accept applications up until the following, you know, week at the council meeting and just have like a link on our website that would, that people could access to see the application.
But that, that's an option.
Yeah. So it's just, it'll be a little different than how we normally do the packet, but we can make it work.
Any other questions?
Yeah, but that, that wouldn't. Randy could still, I, I want to know the two names that Randy has in mind before I decide anything.
Let, let's, let's take public comment and then we can discuss it, the names. How's that? Any public comment on this item, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom waiting room who is, who would like to speak on this agenda item, if you would use the raised hand function and raise your hand, I will call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you, Gail. All right, let's move on to discussion. Randy?
So Mayor, I'll just, real, real quick, the two names that come to mind are, the first one is Jeff Rains. Because I've known Jeff 20 plus years. You know, he's a very smart man. He's just continuing to grow and to become a better human being on a daily basis. I just, I enjoy the Dickens out of him and, and I obviously like the name Rains. The, and the continuity of that. The other candidate that I would propose would be Steve Olson. Who has been on, who has been almost as, as long as Alan Rains on the Treasury
Budget Committee.
Budget Committee. So those two names come, come to mind real quick, so.
Randy, have they indicated a willingness to serve to you?
I have spoken with Jeff. I have not spoken with Steve, but I, I just, I think, I think Steve would, again, I'd reach out to him. I think all of us can reach out to him. But I, but again, those are just mine. There, I'm not trying to lead this or, or appoint anybody. I'm just putting that out there. I actually like Bill's idea too of, of putting it out there into the public arena, getting as many applicants as we can and making decisions as quick as we can, so. Either or.
Bill, and just a reminder, councilmembers, let's remember to bring it back to the chair to speak. Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sticks. Yeah, I, I think that would just, I think it's appropriate that we at least get a notice in the paper. And to be, for fairness and transparency, but I, I do think we don't need to go through the whole interview, et cetera, process. I think we can, we, we get the notice, we get the names, we make a decision at the first opportunity.
Susan?
So when you say get the names, that means that we get a, a short bio? And, and that would include if, if Jeff Rains and Steve Olson want to do it, they're, they'll just be part of the names? Because I, I, I also like both those, those candidates very much. Yeah.
And I just think they ought to fill something out and a lot of people have a chance and and then we just, we get, we get them all and we make a decision.
Okay. And I think it's really important to get a notice out in, in terms of following the democratic process and to encourage some diversity and, you know, different names to get involved. And those two sound great. So any other comments?
Mayor Sticks, do you think we have a consensus then?
Seems like it. Do we need a motion on this?
No formal motion necessary at this time. Staff will publish the notice and return with an item for an appointment at the next meeting with the name blank and council can select as desired.
Okay. And when is it going in the paper, James?
What is it? I'm, I'm sorry.
It will go in the paper.
Yeah, so we'll go in the paper this Friday, which means that we would encourage everybody who's interested, anybody watching who's interested to apply next week. And then it would come back on January 25th.
Okay, great. Thank you for handling this so rapidly. Okay, we'll move on to number six. Item number six, Ojai City Hall Campus. And we're so excited to talk about the future of Oak Tree House and Little House. And just a reminder, this is an opportunity for us to take the next step and get it ready so we can actually make some plans. So James, you want to?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this, it, it is, it's an exciting opportunity for us, you know, the next item on the agenda is goals. And I remember last year that in multiple of our goal discussions, we talked about the vision for our city hall campus and, you know, being able to provide more amenities and more, more programming to the community at our city hall campus. And I think that this is kind of the first big step in that direction. And so I have just a couple of pictures I'll show for maybe people who aren't familiar with the campus or the buildings. But anybody who has visited our city hall site, I think we have a very unique photogenic city hall. We have our Smith Hobson estate that has been converted into city hall. And so I think it's one of, kind of one of the most unique and interesting city halls I've ever been to. And one of the interesting things about these two buildings that are right next door to, to our city hall building is they are very similar in style. It's very similar buildings. And in fact, if, if you noticed in the packet, we talk about the history of one of the buildings and it was originally the chauffeur's quarters to the, to this Smith Hobson house, which is interesting as well. And and so there's two buildings. And part of why this is coming to council pretty quickly here is when we adopted our budget in June, we, like I said, we talked about our vision for the campus and programming and everything. But we did not know that these buildings would be vacant and come back to the city for use. So we didn't budget for anything to be done in these buildings. We did not have designs or anything else and there wasn't a line item for us to really maintain them. And so it is a very exciting thing because of all the possibilities, but it's also, you know, there's some responsibility that we'll have to take on for these buildings. And so right now, we don't have like a line item for maintenance of these buildings at all. So technically, you know, even if we want to do some basic maintenance things, we don't have the budget to do that. And so I'll get into that a little bit more, but the two buildings are the Little House. And we show our sign here at city hall and you can see Little House is the building to the left closest to our city hall site. And then the Oak Tree House, which is the building kind of further down to the right, closer to Stewart Canyon. And so these three buildings will now, assuming that the city council agrees with some of the, the items listed, is these three buildings will make up our city hall campus. And we're, we're going to work on some signage and things like that. That'll come back as well for essentially what we're calling at this point, the city hall community campus. And so the, the two buildings, right now, we're going to start by looking at the Little House building and what is included in that building. One of the things we're really excited about is what's called Kent Hall. And apparently you can see from the image here that it served as a bingo hall recently at some point because the bingo devices are still installed at the building. But this hall is a pretty large hall that would, has a capacity of, of over 100 people that I think we could utilize fairly quickly to hold community meetings and things like that. You know, it can be a, a community meeting space. And then I think long term, it has a lot of potential because of what, what is it fairly close to it, which is this, this kitchen facility where we had talked about being able to hold events and things like that. And I think we can do that fairly easily with some repairs by easily with some repairs by um utilizing the hall space, the kitchen space, and then the surrounding deck decking and outdoor space as well. So there's a lot of potential for that space to be utilized for events and community meetings. Um there's also another space. This is right adjacent to the kitchen with the kitchen being off to the to the right of this picture. This is uh essentially a dining room space. Um and this faces out the front of the building um looking towards the city hall parking lot is where you can see those cars there. And city hall is is uh kind of to the front right of this building. So you can see a lot of potential for like meeting space and events uh and programming at city hall. There's also several offices. There's I think it's six offices at the Little House. And so this picture shows some of the um reception and office space. And so um we note in the report that kind of what we proposed, starting with is just prepping this space, the Kent Hall space to be used for meetings and things with the longer term plan being to do some of the work on the kitchen and the office spaces and get those um designed and and uh prepared to be utilized in the future for for programming. And so that's Little House. Uh Oak Tree House uh is um a smaller building. It's about four offices and this open space here. Um it's actually in fairly decent shape. Um you there's you'll see in the pictures, there's some staining and things from where furniture was, but it's fairly minor. So that space, we could actually utilize fairly quickly for some office space. Um and so we are working on some um some plans for that. Uh but our recommendation is for the while we're working on the longer term Little House that we would utilize the more kind of turnkey ready Oak Tree House for office space, which where we are in need of. Um we noted in the staff report that we had uh the city had performed a space assessment uh approximately six years ago. And in that space assessment, um there was a need for several offices identified, which continues today. And the three options that were identified uh to address that, we're basically making major changes to the Smith Hobson Estate, which uh is impractical for a variety of reasons. Uh particularly the fact that it's landmarked and we wouldn't want to change the space um that much and would not be able to even if we did want to. Um this the second option was to utilize the existing patio and turn that into offices, which um that space is very valuable, especially during COVID. We tend to have outdoor meetings in that space and it's a very useful space. And then the third option was to build a new building um uh in on the dirt lot in the corner where um people are parking for for some of the campus programming, which that space is now really useful. And we also, I don't think, want to go through um the process of building a new building. So instead of doing either of those, we can utilize this existing space. And let me go through Oak Tree House, just just a few more pictures.
Mayor, can I comment on that too? James, I believe in that same report, we had talked about mobile trailers straight across um the street. I think we talked about two or three of those also.
Yeah, that was one of the options would be to put, you know, the portable buildings out there, which again, when you compare, I know I'm talking aesthetics, but I think aesthetics do matter. Uh we can have this very, you know, im- im- matching building to what city hall looks like, that's very picturesque and very uh user friendly. We were talking about taking out the the gate around it to really make it open to the public. Uh we can have this, or we can drop a portable building on a dirt lot. And so I think I know which one I would prefer with just a little bit of cleanup. So so we mentioned in the report, um you know, I wanted to start with those photos of kind of what we what we're talking about because um uh they're not buildings that are maybe that a lot of people may be familiar with. But in the report, we note that um based on all the council discussions about like goals and programming and and the campus vision, that what we're looking at really boils down to meeting space, office space for um for some of the key uh city um staffing needs. Uh event space, potentially um things like the uh weddings and other events like that um could be could be held uh here. Um and out a bathroom along the backside, uh you know, a bathroom and drinking fountain facilities that could serve the different um activities at the campus, because right now we do have the porta potty um out back, which is, you know, that's not a long term solution. And for us, a couple of ones uh that are key is um an our information technology server room, an IT server room uh that which would be a major upgrade to have it in the office space in the Little House versus um having it in kind of the tough shed in the public works yard that we have. Um a records room and a storage room, which again, we currently use our basement and attic. And we've had the basement flood and the attic is uh we need to um we've started to empty that out because you know, we had some concerns about potential hazards uh with a lot of documentation in the at documents in the attic. So this space would give us opportunities to um address those needs. Um now, the caveat to that is I do it it won't be it's not turn it it the Little House in particular is not turnkey. It's gonna need some work. It's gonna need some uh remediation of, you know, uh re- remediation and uh accessibility improvements and and things along those lines. But we think that uh as we mentioned in the report, we could break this into some phases. And a phase one is getting some uh minimal budget of about twenty five thousand dollars to start getting the Oak Tree House uh ready for office spaces to be used there. And then as we're doing that, uh the recommendation is that council authorize that. And then also authorize staff to issue an RFP to get a designer to start working on the design of um the Little House. And uh that would allow us to prepare that design, come back as part of the budget, knowing what we want to do. Um letting you know, with council giving that um direction and feedback on that design. And then um and also knowing what it's gonna cost us and what we need to start building into the budgets in future years. So at this point, that's what we uh are recommending. Uh the item is on the agenda because I know there have been a lot of ideas. So one of the one of the reasons we wanted to bring this was to start to get the feedback from council of uh you know, programming and uses that the council wants to see. And uh those things that there are consensus for, we will then um our recommendation will be that we'll build those into the design work that we're doing. And so um with that, I will um hand it back to to Mayor Sticks for uh council to provide that feedback.
Thank you, James. Uh any questions before we get to public comment? Yep, Bill?
Uh no, I don't have a question. I have comment, Mayor Sticks.
Okay, uh any no questions? Uh Randy?
James, do we just set up an appointment with you to actually do a tour of each of those sites? And can anyone in the public do the same thing?
So um we have so I'll I'll note, we have had several people reach out to us that were interested in using the site. Um different uh groups in the city. We haven't offered any tours yet because we wanted to make sure we wanted to kind of see what the consensus was from council before we use a lot of staff time, you know, touring sites that wouldn't have the ability to use it. But yes, we will um we will definitely schedule tours with council. And then what I I think what I would do is uh I would offer one tour where we'll we be with um the different groups in the public who wanted to go. And I think we would just set up one tour where everybody can go kind of see it and and see what could, you know, what would work. So.
Thank you.
Uh no more questions? We will move on to public comment. Any public comment on this, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom uh waiting room who is watching the meeting and would like to speak, if you would raise your hand, I'll go ahead and call on you. Uh we have one person, um Mr. Miley. Um Mr. Miley, uh let me unmute you. You should be able to speak if you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
I have unmuted myself. Good evening.
Okay.
It all sounds good. A few years ago, I got uh I was interested in exploring all of the property behind city hall. It was introduced to the barn, which is west. It's a substantial building, I believe. It's two stories. It would be a great place for long term storage. And now might be the time to consider that. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Uh Bill?
Mr. Miley beat me to the one of my comments, the barn. Uh that barn is also landmarked. It's also a substantial building. It has great history. It's been the subject of particular historical uh review in the past. I think given a feature story at one point in the Ohio Valley News. So I really think uh first of all, I agree with all the all the recommendations, but would like to add that we make sure we take care of that barn, that if you need to come back to us for a budget allocation to uh stabilize and protect that that landmark that we we do at least that. And um uh you know, maybe get an evaluation of what it would take uh to bring some basic utilities there. Uh and I Mr. Miley's suggestion is very good. I think there might be some other options, but um we don't want to forget the barn. That's an important uh component to our campus. Um the other couple of things I want to mention is uh I you know, we're gonna be moving forward with a microgrid, which makes a lot of sense, especially with these expanded facilities. And I would like to add to the whole um step towards sustainability with the microgrid, how we handle um again, the water resources on this property. Uh we should we should be looking at the feasibility of capturing uh uh storm water coming off the roofs for use in the community garden. Uh I would think that, you know, we haven't done that uh for the uh for the city hall buildings yet, but I think that's really neglectful, the fact it's right next to the community garden. We should be capturing uh uh storm water coming off the roof for uses in the community garden um and just hydrating that whole area. We also need to be looking at, I think, making sure we we maximize the uh the gray water. If we're gonna be doing renovations and things, we ought to be looking at the uh the uh how to replumb for proper gray water use uh for the whole campus um uh in the uh community garden and for uh keeping the uh Stuart Canyon uh and creek hydrated with helping with stream flow. And I would I would go so far as to say, I believe uh there are grants available for a demonstration black water treatment project where we actually set up a locali- a localized um sort of mini scalping uh facility that could treat water to the uh level necess- the level uh adequate again, for watering uh the community garden, if not actually getting into uh helping with stream flow enhancement. But I I just really think that we it's a missed opportunity and there's a lot of funding for those types of demonstration projects. Uh possibly even including the police facility and and public works, although that's on the other side of the road and more expensive. But I think just in terms of the uh storm water uh capture, uh making sure we make we we look at gray water options. And even uh a uh even a a project for black water, uh we we had to at least uh look at that because it's a, you know, wastewater is a resource. It's not just something to get rid of. The other thing is that uh the um I I I do, I like the idea that we are looking at. There's a tremendous demand for use of Kent Hall. It's been it's been used continuously. In fact, it's one of the few things that was being used uh all the way to the end of Help of Ojai's occupancy. I'm I I I didn't realize that it it needs repairs to be used. Frankly, it was being uh booked by Democrat Club and everything, you know, as is. Uh but I do think there's a lot of uh community groups, both small scale and larger scale that uh uh would be more than willing to rent different facilities at uh at that campus. And uh I think that Kent Hall in particular is a a community support facility that that really uh as soon as we could get that in in play, our uh supplying the community needs the better. So anyway, those were uh those are my comments. I'd just like to add to the recommendation along those lines.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that that comment about Kent Hall, um we um one of the things, just as an example, is we noticed like the um the rampway that goes kind of up because it's almost on a second floor. Uh the ramp where rampway had some rot to it and things like that. And so I don't think it's anything like major. So I think we can get that kind of fixed quickly and actually get that being in use again. But we just wanted to try to fix a couple of those things while we still have it vacant. So.
Uh Susan?
Oh, I wholeheartedly support all of uh Bill Wirick's comments, council member Bill Wirick's comments. And I like the name uh Ojai City Hall Community Campus. That's in the right direction. Keep the word community in there before campus. And here's my here's my idea. You've probably heard that airports now have uh a quiet room, a yoga room where people can rest for ten minutes. I think uh if we can either have us a part of a room that, you know, that we can identify a room that's more naturally away from the hub and then put restorative yoga props in it, which Betsy and I can teach people how to use. It would keep people from drinking coffee, so much coffee in the afternoon that they'd be healthier and productivity would increase. And I think it would just it'd be wonderful in keeping with the whole philosophy of health, education. And I I think all the employees will love it. A ten minute nap can do wonders.
We we did um, you know, the one of the smaller office spaces, we did know, I don't know that anybody realizes this, but at city hall, we actually don't have any sort of break room. We have a there's a very small, you know, it's an old house. Uh so there's a very small kitchen. And so um you kind of have to, especially during the pandemic, you have to wait for the la- the next person, you know, has to wait for the person before them to go to the fridge, get their stuff, go around and go back. So we don't have a space for people to like sit and eat or anything like that. Uh we do use kind of our outside space for that. And so we were talking about, you know, especially if that if there's gonna be events at Little House and event space that, you know, a kind of a lounge area that could serve both events, but also be, you know, a break room or uh for use for programming at the campus. So that is kind of one of our goals for this.
Yeah, even in my even even like a a even a cot, so people can if they want to take a little nap, there's nothing wrong with that, you know, we we need to like that should not be uh looked down upon. It should be encouraged. And then if there is a space or we could have a restore what, you know, restorative yoga, let's do it. Because if airports can do it, surely we can do it.
Well, it sounds like we're all on the same page and really excited about all these ideas. Great ideas, Bill and Susan. Uh Bill, you have another idea or?
Just no, none of ideas. One, a quick question is, whose dog is that on attachment A page five eleven?
You know, that was actually the last um one of the last days where Help of Ojai was there. I think it was um it was somebody from Help of Ojai's dog.
Okay, I just want to make sure you didn't get another pet.
No, no, if you see a pig in there, that's me, but not a dog.
Randy?
You know, I su- I support all these ideas. In fact, I think uh the idea that I hadn't thought about was uh was Bill's regarding this black system. Um it's pretty interesting because they're out there, they're available and we could, we might be able to get a grant for it. Um and you know, my fear always with grants is um once you use them and they give you something that's viable and important to your community, um now you gotta maintain it. Now it's yours and there's no grant funding to maintain it. So um so I'd be interested in that. James, um again, I only because I just I I I you know, I'm a design build company. I would love to see you just take the floor plan of that building and and uh draw us up something of what your thoughts are so that we can visualize it and
Okay.
And and again, I'd be interested in coming out. Maybe you guys could even take the time to go tape your room out, the way you and the way you visualize it. It might help us all to be able to see what you what you're trying to achieve. But um I'm behind everything that's been discussed tonight a hundred percent, even the quiet yoga room.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're ready for a motion, uh unless anybody wants to add anything else. Okay, so uh I'll make a motion to direct staff to um approve, well, to approve the money to uh do the plan and move forward.
Yeah, with with some proposed amendments, proposed additional evaluations.
So it's uh to to allocate the twenty five thousand dollars to address those basic deferred maintenance items and then um authorize us to proceed with the design work with those additional um uh items discussed.
I'll second the mayor's motion.
Okay, great, a, a roll call, please, Gail? Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, or Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Well, that's exciting, and we can all look forward to, um, new things happening in the new year. So thank you, and thanks, James, for getting that together. Okay, let's move on to number seven, the last item, uh, city council updated goals. And, um, I just want to say hats off to staff, James. Because when you think about what's happened in the last two years and how pretty much everything has shut down in some form, that we still are getting a lot accomplished when you look at this list. So, thank you, it's, uh, it's pretty amazing, so. Um, James, do you want to give a presentation?
Yeah, I'll just briefly note, we, um, so, uh, we had our, uh, goals discussion, uh, last year, and, you know, anybody who's talked to me the last couple of weeks has probably heard me talk about the time vortex from the last two years, uh, where things that feel like they happened last week happened two years ago and vice versa. So, um, uh, it feels like it was a couple of weeks ago, but I think our goal-setting session was in February or March of last year. And so we had the, uh, goal-setting session, and then, um, uh, where we had a kind of a brainstorming session, and we had our previous goals. Uh, and so, uh, what we wanted to do, now that it's a new year, we wanted to make sure, um, January is always a good time to, to, to do this. Uh, so we wanted to bring it back to council and, um, talk about the goals, try to get, um, a consensus on kind of what the goals are for the next year and what the, the work plan will look like for the next year. And so the document that's in the packet, um, are, it reflects six goals. Uh, and those six goals build on, uh, the prior adopted four goals, which the four goals adopted in 2018 were ensuring prudent fiscal planning, increasing organizational efficiency, strengthening our infrastructure, and effective coordination with county, state, and other agencies. Um, so we took that and we built on that using that feedback from that, um, council workshop. And so we developed, kind of expanded those into six goals. Number one, preserving and improving our community quality of life. Number two, being good stewards of the environment. Number three, increasing organizational efficiency. Four, ensuring prudent financial planning. Five, strengthening infrastructure. And six, effective coordination with county, state, and other agencies. And so it's the same, uh, four, but two kind of additional goals on top of that. And those were, um, where most of the discussion at the last council workshop fell under were either the existing four goals or one of those two new, new goals. And so we, we took that, we developed that, and, um, obviously, uh, by putting it on the agenda today, we're asking for council feedback on that and whether there's a consensus to move forward with those six goals or make any modifications. Uh, and then what we did was we took our work plan, uh, that had all the different items that, um, we wanted to complete, uh, for the year. We removed the items that were complete. We updated items that had been updated. Um, a lot of these, you know, we finished like step one, and now it's time for step two. And so we, we put those into this work plan, and then we added the things from the workshop that had multiple, um, uh, that had a consensus of council. And so, uh, we have both the goal document and the work plan that lists key projects for this year. It is, um, and I just wanted to state this, uh, kind of upfront. We took the items that, um, had a majority of council, uh, and so we did have, if you recall, that brainstorming session where we did, kind of, everybody brought their ideas. We didn't include every idea. We took the ones that had a, you know, a majority of, of, um, council members, uh, supporting it. And so that's what is presented, but today would also be an opportunity, um, if council chooses to, uh, uh, it would be an opportunity for council to add any items, modify any items, identify other, uh, projects, you know, that, um, that should be included. And so, um, uh, with that, uh, that, that's essentially, uh, what the document is before you. The goal is to have one adopted vision statement, goals, and project list that, um, will tell the community, tell the, um, staff, and tell, um, all of, uh, the city what our projects and goals are going to be for the, for the, um, coming year. And so that would be, um, what we would hope to get out of this. Uh, we don't have to adopt it today. We can make modifications and come back. But I think, uh, this first meeting in January is a good opportunity to at least start thinking and talking about what our goals are for the year, so. So with that, uh, I will hand it back over to, to Mayor Sticks.
Thank you, James. Uh, any questions for staff?
I just have comments.
Okay, any public comment on this item, Gail?
If there is anyone in the Zoom waiting room who's here to speak on this agenda item, um, it looks like Mr. Miley has his hand raised and no one else, so I will allow him to speak. Mr. Miley, if you're there, if you can unmute yourself, you can go ahead. You can go ahead and speak, Mr. Miley. Mr. Miley, if you're there, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Good, okay, that's good. Very important. Um, I remember that the council, by five to zero, adopted a, a parking study that was going to be completed during 2022. And that's part of the infrastructure. So I would like that to be considered as an add-on, parking study for infrastructure. And then I have a new one. It would be called public transparency. And the goal would be to increase awareness by our citizens of the benefits provided by our city to one, so that they would know how their tax monies are spent, and two, know about Services Day, and, um, the community can use and benefit from by age, by household, by ethnicity, and by neighborhood. In effect, if this was a corporate structure, it would be a marketing program or branding so that people feel good about the Coca-Cola product. They want to share it with others, and they want to return to it. And when they see the label, they say, wow, that looks delicious. So I would like to see that considered as part of, uh, public benefit somewhere in the goal structure. I'm not sure where within. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Any more comments, Gail?
No one else.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Uh, Bill and then Susan?
Yes, I was wondering if, uh, I think Mr. Miley's suggestion's a good one. And I'm wondering if we could, uh, broaden the language in 1G, Improving Our Quality of Life Parking Improvements and Parking Committee. Uh, could we also include a, uh, parking study in that goal in 1G? I think that fits pretty well. Parking evaluation, parking study.
Yes, I, I think that would make, that fits that, that, um, project pretty well. So we could add that. Uh, and, and I think to Mr. Miley's point, that, that was approved. It just wasn't called out on this, so, so we should add it, um, specifically in there.
So it, it would fit right in there. The other thing on the Improving Our Community Quality of Life, I, I didn't see here. But I think it's important. We, we do have a, um, ongoing action in the Planning Commission. We've talked about it, about revisiting our anti-formula business ordinance uh, for, uh, uh, you know, broadening the, the protection and, and incentives for, uh, localism, local business, uh, keeping, uh, industrial retail and corporate, um, retail out of the community to the extent possible. And I, I wonder if that's something that would rate its own, um, item as, uh, something we've identified, uh, of fairly, uh, potential strong impact that, uh, we need to set as a goal. Maybe, uh, maybe under, uh, 1L. I just wonder what the rest of my colleagues think about that.
1L?
Well, it would be an added item for, uh, review and possible expansion of the anti-formula business ordinance.
Okay, so after K is what you're saying?
Yes.
I think that makes sense.
Well, and just to clarify, Planning is already, is working on this currently, James?
Right.
Yeah, it is on the Planning Commission work plan. I think, you know, we had wrestled with, um, we thought about adding all the Planning Commission work plan items on, and, uh, we ended up, how we approached it was the items that we thought would take a lot of, potentially take a lot of, uh, either staff time or resources. We, we did include here, and then the simpler items, we only have on the Planning Commission work plan. But I would, kind of thinking that through, we are expecting to spend some time on that one. So I think that one would be fair to add to this list. It is going to be, you know, one of the, the things with this document is to, um, help people understand where we're going to spend our staff time this year, and that is something that, um, we're going to have to spend some staff time on to, to move forward, so.
Great, uh, okay, Susan, then Randy?
Okay, so, uh, back to 1G. I, I don't know if this is necessary, but when people see the word parking, uh, I think they mostly think of car parking. And I again want to emphasize how important people parking benches and bicycles are. Just for example, if you look at the, uh, Ben Franklin, uh, parking lot, for example, if, there's absolutely no place to sit. And I know there are people in Ojai, I've seen them walk from Bonds to the bottom of, to the river bottom, there's, with their groceries, and there's no place for them to sit along the way. Um, so, and it just, in keeping with our making Ojai more pedestrian-friendly, people will walk more if they know, I think, if they know that somewhere along the way they can take a little break, plus they can enjoy the view. You know, it's the most beautiful view, that whole stretch Maricopa Highway.
Yeah.
You know, looking up at the mountains. And, and, uh, so that's my comment just on that. Um, so you're saying that the parking committee may reconvene in 2022?
Yes, yes, the pla- we were planning, uh, we are working on, um, the tree committee in the next couple of weeks, and then we are planning to work on the parking committee following that.
Okay, yeah, good. And my other thought, and, and again, I don't know if this is necessary, but where it says strengthening our, uh, uh, back to City of Ojai goals, number five, strengthening our infrastructure, enhance our in- infrastructure through effective planning, blah, blah, blah. Um, what about, you know, like when Bill brought up about the plumbing and making it, um, what's the word? Instead of just in, you know, just regular plumbing, he brought up that it should include, you know, gray water.
Gray water and black water, yeah.
And that sort of thing. So is there a word that would indicate that we want our infrastructure to be, uh, you know, to be progressive, to look ahead, to consider, um, not just the same old infrastructure, but, um, what's the word, sustainable, green, you know, there might be a better word.
Yeah, yeah, in a, innovate, you know, looking at innovative options, um, sustainable, innovative and sustainable.
Options, you know, we could play around with that. So that it's really clear, it's not just business as usual.
Uh, Randy?
So, um, these are, these are great comments. I, I, the parking, 1B, the, the parking issue, I sure would like to see the criteria of how we're going to assess parking in this community. Because I think that's the, um, when we say parking, it's pretty broad. You know, are we going to identify how many spots we have today? Um, how many businesses that we have that need them? I, I, I mean, how many businesses that have, um, not just patrons, but they have the workers and where to they park? I mean, I mean, parking in Ojai is huge. And it's, and it's kind of, I'd like to see what the criteria is of what we're going to assess, evaluate, or determine, um, in, in the end, what we're, you know, you, you know, I mean, what's the goal? Create more, create less, have better? Um, you know, so, uh, the sooner we can get a committee together and actually have them start writing out this, I think is really, really important. And then, um, uh, Susan's comment about more park benches on public right-of-ways, I'm, I'm all for that. I, I think that's a great idea. Um, I don't know about this, the actual visual, um, thing now, looking up to 33 towards the mountains. It looks like it's a giant ski slope, and we got the solemn track. I'm waiting to see if it's going to be skateboards or bikes or cars that are going to be going in and out of those cones. Um, but aside from that, um, I think more public parking and more pedestrian, let's call it for, for Susan, if lack for a better term, but pedestrian parking.
Yeah, I like that.
We need more of it.
Parking.
Yep. So, um, and again, that all has to be part of that evaluation.
May I add to that comment if, if, when, when Randy, and, uh, Mayor Protem Randy is done?
Uh, go ahead, Susan, yeah.
I think, uh, Mayor Protem Randy, it's, the parking study should include everything you said. And to my way of thinking, a parking study for cars would include every parking lot in the city, including the ones that are never used or hardly ever used. Like, I can think of a couple off the top of my head, so that we can think of a, we could have a potential plan, a potential shared parking plan, at least for the weekend, like when the banks are closed and places where there's now a signs that says no parking. Perhaps it should say no parking during X business hours, but, you know, that, so that the city can negotiate, you know, when we're, when we're here and what's available, rather than using precious land that should, in my opinion, where possible, go to housing, not parking more cars. I mean, my priority is housing, and then car parking would be next. I wouldn't want to use land that could potentially be for, uh, for housing for parking. That's my own, own philosophy at the moment.
So Mayor, one other, one other, um, if I can, one other comment along with that. You know, Susan, I, I, um, you know, as, as the discussion moves towards bikes and more bicycling activities in the community, and more spaces for bike racks and things of that nature. Again, I think part of the parking study has to be, um, what is the level of bicycling in our community? You know, can we assess that? Can we address that? And, and you always want to look at, to me, is what we do Monday through Thursday, which is us, and what we do Friday through Sunday, which is others. And I think we have to look at that in, in all of this. What do we need for our community purposes? You know, again, during the week for us, and, you know, wha- wha- what are we looking at? Uh, 7,500 to 10,000 people every weekend coming into Ojai? And how we can accommodate that addition, you know, that's double our population. So, um, this parking thing is huge, and how we go about it is critical.
Yeah, yeah, just comment, um, just when you said the weekend is, I think you said it's them, I would say it's us and them.
Well, I'm just saying that, that there's an influx of 10,000 others that come in, that we rely on, that we need, we want, and we cherish. But that's still a number that we have to look at when we start looking at parking in this community.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I would like to add to the list electrifying all city buildings, um, as we move forward, especially with the, the new buildings that we're acquiring, and make sure that's a priority in terms of climate change.
Yeah, and I, I actually, um, on that topic, um, I do think that we actually, the council in, I think it was March or April of last year, gave direction to staff to start investigating that and putting a plan together. So that is something we should have, we should have added that in, so.
But I just, I just got electric heat. It is fantastic. I'd highly recommend it, really. I just got electric heat. It is fantastic. I'd highly recommend it. Really great, so.
What'd you, what'd you get, Mayor?
Electric heat. Come over and see it. It's incredible.
I, I will. Seriously, I will. We're looking, we're, we're doing the same thing at our house and at our, our other house. So, yeah, I, I will.
It's like heats up a room like that. Okay, any other suggestions or additions? It sounds like we have got a really great list, and thank you so much, Steph, for, for, one, putting the list together and then working on all these items, particularly during the last two years. Okay, so we have a motion to, anybody want to make a motion, or Will? I can't hear you, Bill. You're muted.
To adopt is amended.
Can you repeat that? You're muted.
To adopt, staff recommendation has amended.
Okay, all right. I'll second that. Roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Thank you. Exciting, exciting plans, and I think it'd be really great also to get this plan out there and circulate it so people really understand what's happening, because there's a lot happening.
Yeah, we'll make it available.
Okay, great.
I love that it's all written out like this.
Love it.
My life.
All right, we'll move on to council member reports. Anyone have anything to report? Uh, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I, I think I circulated to everybody what I consider a really significant move by Caltrans to finally adopt a complete streets policy from the top down, very explicit. It was highlighted at the VCTC meeting for discussion, and they made it very clear that what we're doing with our ATP project is the, the kind of precursor that they're looking at everywhere and statewide. So, you know, we really are on the, on the right side of history there, and Caltrans to issue that complete streets policy, I think, is, is as significant as, as some other smaller items, for example, VCTC moving from a level of service to vehicle miles traveled for evaluations, you know, looking at things in a, in a systematic way. And the other thing was that, I believe we got our 300,000 for, through the VCTC one-time grant for some street maintenance work, which was really good. It's one, one time when it's an advantage to be a small city, because they had a minimum of 300,000, so, you know, Fillmore, other cities that were larger got the same amount, so sometimes it's an advantage to be tiny. And then the other thing that, that was that they, they, they announced a new program that staff has already jumped on. I forwarded the information on possibly one of the off-the-shelf grants, grant ideas or planning projects that came out of the in-stream flow process, the kinds of things, you know, the litany of projects waiting for grant app, you know, grant support. We've got, Caltrans has a program we might be able to take advantage, and staff has been great to jump on it with a short lead, a really short timeframe. And I think we're going to have a competitive, I think we're going to have a competitive application for one of those projects. So I, I was, I was real positive to see those three things happen, I thought.
Great news. Yeah, thank you for sharing, Bill. Anyone else? Well, just a reminder that Monday at 10:00 AM in Libby Park is the Martin Luther King Celebration. It'll, it'll be small because of COVID, but please come and support that.
What is it?
There's going to be a, a Martin Luther King, the annual Martin Luther King celebration put on by a lot of Nordoff kids and leadership students, and Julie Toomey might will be there, and be a nice event. So, please support that. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
About, are we, is North Drown and whatever the other street was on the agenda for the traffic calming?
Yeah, well, so it's the Drown Street Analysis is scheduled for January 25th.
January 25th?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's the next council meeting.
Yeah, both ends of Drown, yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to city management report.
Thank you. Quickly, just so the public's aware, because we'll probably be posting this in the next day or two. We are scheduled to have our joint meeting with the HPC next week, January 18th. That'll be virtual, and, which works because the HPC has been working on a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation they want to give, so that, I think, will be pretty functional via Zoom. But that'll be a January 18th meeting, which of, of course is open to the public to also attend via Zoom. And also, we just announced, and we're going to be putting more information out on it, January 26th, we are having our first-ever community conversation regarding police services. And so the chief, Chief Rivera and I are going to be at, the plan right now is at the Bowl, although the minute we said it, the weather updated and said rain was in the forecast, but it's, it's so far away, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not too worried about it, but right now, the plan is January 26th, 6:00 PM at the Bowl. Chief Rivera and I will be there. We'll give kind of a brief presentation on some of the different things we're seeing, and then the bulk of the meeting is we're, we're going to ask the public, you know, for feedback on what they're seeing, what we're doing well, and what we can do better. So I think it's kind of an exciting new thing we're going to try, and the public is invited and intended, encouraged to attend and, and let us hear that feedback, so.
Great news. Important event. Thank you for organizing. Bill?
James, I, I'm just going to bring this up because it's an issue, I think, of overall council concern.
Yeah.
That's this status of the one thing that's in the hopper that is ready to go and should be ready to go, I, you know, in terms of providing affordable housing, and that's that development agreement. It's frustrating that we haven't started on that. Ryan and I spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd ask about its status.
Yeah, so that is on the agenda for January 25th. We actually confirmed that date with the developer, our, you know, property owner yesterday to make sure he was available and would attend, so it is, the plan right now is Drown, the Drown Avenue Analysis, and then the development agreement for, for the housing projects would be on January 25th.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to, to your point, that was a long time in the, in the making. I think it was negotiated, you know, almost a year ago at this point, so we'll, we'll get it moving.
Thank you. Any future agenda items from anyone? Okay, well, it's 18, 2 hours and 18 minutes. I think that's a record. So thank you all for a very efficient and productive and fruitful meeting, so I'm grateful to all of you, and this meeting's adjourned.